Okay, so the first thing we're going to talk about is, thank you for coming here. Town meeting is the perfect example of democracy. It's the best example, it's the purest example of democracy. And you have the right, not the right really, the duty to vote. So we're glad you're all here. First thing I want to talk about, and I've said this before and it usually hasn't been an issue, is decorum. I expect you to be respectful to the board members, Finance Committee, the Board, and anybody else who's speaking. And I also expect you to be respectful to each other. There's no reason, there's plenty of bad blood in the world today, doesn't have to be here. So let's be respectful of each other. And I will not, one thing I just will not, and I really haven't in the past, so you should all know this, I want everyone to be able to speak, if they have something new to say. So once someone has spoken about an issue, and then someone has, and others have commented on it, don't repeat anything that's already been said. That just takes time that we don't need to take. You get five minutes to read the article, and two minutes to comment. Should be plenty of time. One issue we have that's totally different is, the microphones are in the back break between the upper seats and the lower seats. There are four microphones there, is that correct? Three microphones there. Pick any one to speak at. Line up, wait for your turn to speak. Now, we have clickers for everyone. We have 1,000 clickers. I, God, I hope we don't have over 1,000 people, but we have 1,000 clickers. And we're going to get an explanation now of exactly how they work. If you just pay your attention, please. Come on up. She's going to come up and speak and explain exactly how it works.
Good evening, everybody. I know most of you are, or some of you, I should say, are familiar with how to use the devices, but we're going to go through a quick sort of example for anybody who may be new. So you have a device in front of you. On the screen, I have a quick example of what you will be looking at. So to press yes, a successful yes vote, you'll press 1A on your device, you will see that flash in the little LED screen, and it will turn green, a green flashing light briefly. A successful no vote will be 2B, same process. The choice will flash on the LED screen, you'll see a green light. And a vote not registered, a red light, and a circle with a line. You'll see that when polling is not open, if you've tried to vote when the polls are closed. Okay. Couple things, you can change your mind if you change it before polling closes. You'll simply press your other choice, it takes the last thing that you enter. The voting slides are going to have a little clicker icon in the lower corner, and we're going to give you a couple extra seconds this time, 15 seconds. So we're going to try some test questions. I have two of them for you. I'm going to have to go ahead and run down to my computer to do them, so I'll be away from the mic. But are you guys ready? Do you have any questions before I go down there? Nope? Good? All right. See you in a second.
Should we do the test questions?
Oh, okay, okay. Ready?
Will the Celtics beat the Miami Heat in game five? Please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Polling is open.
Must have some Florida residents here. Thank you, good job. Appreciate it. So, first thing I need to do, which I didn't do, is declare the meeting. I don't know. Meeting is called to order. We're going to have the Chair of the Board, Alicia Greco, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alicia?
You're going to speak into the microphone?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Town Meeting members. Thank you for taking the time on this Tuesday evening to attend our annual town meeting. Since Newbury has an open town meeting form of government, you are a legislative body. It is of vital importance to the future of our town that you stay informed and engaged. And again, I thank you all for attending tonight. Recently, the town has had the unprecedented opportunity to make investments in our community through the American Rescue Plan Act grant program. Newbury was awarded $2.1 million, and the Board has voted to use those ARPA monies to make several investments in our community. During the height of COVID, we moved the Council on Aging away from a classroom at Newbury Elementary School into a larger, more adequate space to better serve our aging population. We supplemented grant monies to replace the older Council on Aging van. We provided funding to the Newbury Food Pantry and the Board of Health, which were vital resources during the global pandemic. We purchased public safety and DPW vehicles and equipment, taking the financial burden off the taxpayer. We completed the Plum Island Bath House project. We updated our recreation fields in library. We preserved and digitized over 100 historic records and documents. And we provided resources to protect our shellfish industry. Tonight, as we go through the warrant, you will see in Article 13 that we have begun, once again, to make capital or one-time purchases with free cash. Our free cash reserves have grown due to sound fiscal planning and the influx of grant monies. One of the Select Board's goals is to develop a budget within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half and in compliance with the town's comprehensive financial policies passed in 2017. The budget presented to you tonight in Article Five is a budget that does not rely on one-time funding sources or unsustainable practices, and that ensures current revenues are sufficient to support operating expenses. Recently, the Town of Newbury received the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our fiscal year 2024 budget. This national award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and it represents a significant achievement for the Town of Newbury. This achievement, coupled with Newbury's AAA bond rating, exemplifies how extremely well-managed Newbury is. I would like to thank our Town Administrator and the Finance Department for their dedication and leadership, which has brought Newbury to this fiscal high point today. I would also like to thank you, our Town Meeting members and taxpayers, for supporting our budgets over the years. You should feel good about how your resources are used in Newbury. Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. Your attendance shows that you care about our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. We're going to ask, I'm going to ask the Constable, David, where are you? Okay, David is going to, David is going to do the return of service.
Good evening. It's on?
Closer to the mic. Swallow it.
Good evening. I attest that the inhabitants of the Town of Newbury who are qualified to vote were properly warned and notified of the date and time and the location of this meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to do an introduction of all the folks that are up here. Start with the Select Board. We have Alicia, who's the Chair. We have Bill DeMayo, who's the Assistant Chair. We have the Clerk, Leslie Matthews. And then we have Dana Packer and Jeff Walker. Finance Committee, the Chair is Erica Jacobson. Vice Chair is Joseph Ali. Jean Case, Patrick Heffernan, Richard Keys, Vanessa Rossi, and Frank Visconti. Town Clerk, Gretchen, where's Gretchen? Okay, Gretchen, hi Gretchen. Planning Director is Martha Taylor. And the Assistant Town Planner is Kirsten Grubbs. Now we've got to talk about, and we actually have to vote, on people who are not members of the town and not voters, but who will have the right to speak. So I'm going to read it, and then we just need a simple motion to accept them, is able to read, and then a second, and then a vote. Lisa Mead, Town Council. Tracy Blaze, Town Administrator. David Fields, Assistant Town Administrator. Eva Pastor, Town Accountant. Patricia Fisher, Police Chief. David Evans, Fire Chief. James Sennett, DPW Director and Facilities Manager. Ethan Cohen, PEG Production Specialist. Jonathan Temple, IT Director. Cindy Courier, COA Director. Brian Forget, Superintendent of the Triton District. Brian Perry, Business Manager. Maureen Lynch, Whittier Superintendent. Kara Cosmice, she's the Whittier Business Manager. And then Ian Burns and Kayla Renee, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. Also Jonathan Herrick is going to speak to an issue here about... Yeah, yes. And then I also want to introduce, I also want to introduce our State Rep who's here. Thank you for coming, Kristin. Just stand and let everybody see who you are. Kristin Kusner. Thank you for coming. She did?
Yeah.
Okay. So the vote is up there? You got your clickers? You know what to do, right? Okay. Start the vote. Looks like we're all set, okay. Now, there's another vote that we have to take, and that is that we are going to waive the reading of the warrant, and allow each article to be summarized instead. This does take a vote also. A simple vote. Do you want to put that up also? Thank you. Okay, start the vote. I have a note here that says, turn off all cell phones. But what I would ask you to do is, turn off any message or any ringing or anything like that, because some of you may have young kids at home and might be concerned about any issues that might be coming up. So just silence them, you don't have to turn them off. Thank you. We also said, I already said that you'll have five minutes to read the warrant, I'm sorry, to read the article, and two minutes to comment and add, hopefully add something that will be beneficial for us to understand the positions. Again, please, don't repeat what's already been said. Thank you. Okay, let's get to the warrant. Article number one. Not, no vote, there's no vote required on this, but to meet in our respective voting districts, which is what we're doing right now. Polls are open, we know the time. Precinct one, precinct two. And then you see the positions and what the terms are. Article two. Alicia?
I move, I move that the town accept the reports of the Town Officers, Boards, and Committees as printed in the 2023 Town Report without ratification or authorization of any action.
Let's vote. Second. Do we get a second?
Second. 272, 4, 11, no.
Thank you. Okay. We have Article three. See if the town will fix the salaries and compensation of certain elective officers of the town as follows. Bill DeMayo?
I move that the town fix the salaries and compensation of the elective officers as listed in Article three.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion or debate? Hearing none? Let's vote.
287, yes, 32, no.
Thank you. Article four is a citizen's petition, excuse me. It's going to be read by Kathleen Downey. And there is Jonathan Herrick, who I mentioned earlier, is allowed to speak. He's going to be able to add some in terms of actual experience. Now, is she back there?
I'm here. Shall I wait a moment? Can people chance to read the article? I'll read the motion.
Read, read the article, yes. Read the motion.
Okay. Well, greetings, everyone. I'm Kathleen Downey. I reside at 54 Main Street. I make the motion to pass Article four and move that be voted on favorably for the following reasons. Whereas the town wishes to protect the health and welfare of Newbury, its residents, visitors, and local wildlife by reducing the use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, known as ESKRs, instead promote an integrated pest management strategy. Whereas ESKRs are more likely than first-generation anticoagulants to kill non-target animals who feed on poison prey or caucuses and remain longer in animal tissues, as such, ESKRs pose greater risks to non-target species, including pets and wildlife, and also put children at risk of poisoning should they come into contact with these highly toxic ESKRs. Whereas it's in the best interest of public health to eliminate the use of toxic rodenticides on land, ponds, and waterways, as the Newbury Select Board decreed in January 2024, related to ESKRs on town-owned properties, to further encourage the reduction and elimination of toxic rodenticides, specifically ESKRs, on privately-owned properties. Whereas the Town of Newbury finds that a balanced and healthy ecosystem is vital to the health of the town and its residents and visitors, as such, it is also in need of protection from exposures to ESKRs, not only on town-owned properties, but also on privately-owned and managed properties. Therefore, be it resolved that, residents are urged to pass this initiative with a yes vote. Should Article four pass at a town meeting this evening, the Select Board would file a Home Rule petition that state legislator, legislature, excuse me, to allow the Town of Newbury to adopt a bylaw restricting the use of ESKRs on private lands. As with the Select Board's recent decree prohibiting ESKRs on town-owned properties, waivers would be available determined by the Board of Health in instances of severe rodent infestation. The Town of Newbury shall continue its current work relating to town-owned properties, develop and implement an integrated pest management policy and/or set a set of practices with the goal of eliminating ESKRs, use, use of ESKRs by or on behalf of privately-owned municipal property-owning or managing entities. Finally, the Town of Newbury shall engage in public education and outreach efforts about the benefits of integrated pest management policies and practices on privately-owned land and in general. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to vote on this petition? That was the motion, yeah, that's right, that's right, that was the motion. We did have it read. So is there any discussion or debate on this? Any questions?
Yes. My name's Nicole Bloor. I live at 13 River Street in Newbury, and I support Article four. These second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides belong to a highly toxic class of poisons, and it has been clear since their first introduction in the 1970s that they are a danger to the health of wildlife, pets, and people. The U.S. EPA banned the sale of these rodenticides to the general public in 2014 because there were reports of 10,000 children being poisoned yearly. Now, only licensed professionals are permitted to apply the bait you see in the ever-present black boxes outside buildings. And could I ask that the slide be put up? Thank you. Thankfully, this ban has been effective in reducing poisonings in children. Unfortunately, though, we're seeing a dramatic uptick in the poisoning of our wildlife as the use of ESKRs increase. The Tufts Wildlife Clinic has found that 100% of red-tailed hawks that present to the clinic test positive for these poisons. They've been implicated in the recent deaths of several bald eagles in Massachusetts. We almost lost the bald eagles.
Thank you. Thank you. I think this issue was very clearly explained. I think everybody understands. I appreciate the passion. Yes, please, you're up. Explain who you are and why you're speaking.
Right. My name is Bruce Parks, and I live on Austin Lane in Byfield. And I agree that this risk of secondary poisoning is very concerning. However, I think the risk has to be balanced with rodent control in the town. People who have infestations of mice and rats should be able, as they are under state law, to deal with them as is necessary without having to go and make a case that it's severe or getting someone else to approve it. Now, there are bans already on ESKRs around the country and in Canada. And in many cases, they're all alternatives to complete bans that have been infected. For example, in Montreal, they have a ban on placing it outside without special permit, but you can place it inside. Now, we don't know in Newbury who uses it or why, but we're about to ban it. I think we ought to do more homework and make sure that we're not going to have an uptick in rodent population and in various things that they do, damage and fire threats and so forth, without really understanding what we're doing. So that's what I feel. We should not pass this ban tonight.
Thank you. Could I have a second for this motion? Any discussion or debate?
Yes.
Yes.
Carolyn Casey, 6th Farah Street, Byfield. There are many ways to eliminate rodents, to prevent your building from future infestation without using poison. Sealing up entry points, removing the food source, yearly monitoring and checking every year to make sure they haven't found new ways in. If you hire a pest control company that does not address the original problems and use second-generation rodent poison, they return four times a year and fill the bait boxes up with more poison with no end in sight. The poisoned rats and mice take 10 days to die, making them easy prey for raptors and wildlife, whose meal plan includes rodents. They in turn are poisoned. A family of barn owls can consume 3,000 rodents a year. A barn owl will die after eating three poisoned rodents. The Great Salt Marsh is comprised of 10,000 acres, making it the largest salt marsh north of Long Island. Parker River National Wildlife Refuge, which does not use rodenticides, is 2,900 acres, which is a migration route for many birds and breeding ground for 60 species. There have been a few studies that show that these poisons can leak into the wetlands, marshes, and streams due to runoff and can affect the aquatic life. This doesn't bode well for the herons, eagles, ospreys, and egrets that inhabit our many wetland areas, including Parker River.
Thank you. I think we've seen both sides of this issue, and I think we should vote. Is it set up yet? Let's vote. You already spoke. Please sit down.
I didn't, can I?
You already spoke. Thank you.
You signed me up on that thing that you said my name as a guest that I could speak. I'll be really quick.
I already called the vote. Sit down, please. Here it is. Yes or no? Let's vote. Vote. Pretty, 169, yes, 169, yes, and 78, no. Thank you. I'm going to ask Erica Jacobson to give the Finance Committee report now before we do the appropriations.
Mr. Moderator? I'm behind you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to have a point of order where I do not believe that that was handled in the appropriate manner. He was, he was, he was... He was on your list as a guest speaker, and you did not allow him to speak. And I just want to say, I did not even vote on the article because of what was going on on the floor. And I would, I would, I would like to motion that the gentleman gets allowed to speak, and then we revote that, that article. speak, and then we revote that, that article.
And I'll second that.
So, this is out of order. We can, we can? Could you give me a moment here, please? Thank you. So, I was, I'm sorry, I did not realize, and I don't know why he didn't realize it, but he had not spoken yet, and I apologize for that. But it takes seven people who want to, who, who sent, who say that I goofed on this thing and that you want to revote. It takes seven people to do that.
Yes.
I don't, I don't see seven hands. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Okay. To vote to redo it. Okay. So now, we need a vote to revote, to allow the gentleman to speak and to revote. Are you ready? Are you ready? Okay. Okay, vote. Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. What you're voting on right now is to revoke the vote. You're listening? You're going to revoke the vote and revote. That's what this vote is. I thought it was pretty clear. But if you don't understand it, that's what it's about. Okay? Everybody got it now?
Yes, to revote.
Okay, so that's pretty clear. That's a pretty clear number. So, where's the gentleman? Please, I'm sorry. I don't know why I thought you had spoke, spoken, but I did. I apologize.
All right, well, good evening, Newberry Port. I am Jonathan Herrick. I'm a wildlife photographer. Newberry. No, I'm actually from New Margate, New Hampshire, and I'm really nervous. And I'm a wildlife photographer. I spend almost half of my week working, and then the rest of my week is literally watching birds and wildlife and owls. Many of the owls that I watch are specifically here in this town, in Newberry, in Newberry Port, and up and down Plum Island. I travel everywhere. I've seen hundreds of owls poisoned with rodenticide poison, and they just, it, just three mice starts to make their stomachs bleed, and it turns their body into a swelling blob of pus until it literally starts coming out of their face. All of the raptor rehabbers here in the local area are full, nonstop. I'm friends with all of them, and they're literally going nonstop. They have raptors coming in full of rodenticide poison because there's just so much everywhere. It's, it's a horrible, scary thing to see, and I see it myself in the woods, at least on a monthly basis, and I have to bring the birds in to a raptor rehab. So that's why we're voting for this. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion to revote. And we can take that vote. Article Four, we can revote on Article Four. You want to put that up, please? Okay. Vote. 269, yes. 69, no. Thank you. Now we will have the Finance Committee report. Thank you.
Hello and good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And before I get started with my official remarks, I want to thank the many town employees who were instrumental in getting us here tonight. And I don't just mean with the setup, but thank you to everyone in the IT and audiovisual and the PEG access group for getting us set up here tonight. I also want to thank the town clerk, whose job it is to also get us here to take votes, and the many, many hours that all of our department heads give each year to work to create the budget and then to keep to the budget. Every day, this is part of their jobs. We congregate once, maybe twice a year, to talk about the budget, but our town employees are really there in the forefront, leading the charge. And I again want to say congratulations to all of them on the receipt of the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Distinguished Budget Presentation. So I really want to say thank you to everyone who does that for us. So tonight, I'm saying welcome back, and we're in new digs here tonight at Triton Auditorium. I hope that the audio and visuals are better. We don't have the fans running overhead, and we can hear each other speak. So tonight, I want to go to kind of a little bit of an ATM overview. I think this is a really good thing. It's kind of like the Olympics. Every four years, you have to remember, how is curling scored? How does this work? Municipal finance isn't a game, but there are specific rules that we must follow, and town meeting is part of that. So regardless of how many meetings you've been to before, it never hurts to have a quick refresher. So, as a town in Massachusetts, we're required to have an annual meeting. Here in Newberry, the date is set by the Select Board. The business or agenda of each town meeting is contained in the document known as the warrant. It is to warn, remember, warn, the town's voters or residents of the items to be discussed. This will include all of the articles, which are the items that the town will act on at that particular town meeting. It'll also state the date, time, and place of the town meeting. The Select Board approves and issues the warrant, and the articles will be addressed in the order they are approved. Any action taken at town meeting is not valid unless that article was listed on the warrant. This warrant was unanimously approved by the five members of the Select Board here tonight. Every one of them listened to the articles at the same meeting that the Finance Committee was at, and they approved this warrant as written. Once the warrant is closed, signed by the Select Board, and posted by the constable, no other business can be brought before town meeting. The language used is legally drafted and reviewed by Town Council, and oftentimes comes right from statute. After, oh, the warrant articles are posted on the main board at town offices, as well as locations at polling locations at least one week before annual town meeting and two weeks before a special town meeting. Companies are available at Town Hall, and of course, in this day and age, also online. After the warrant articles approved, the Finance Committee reviews each article, asks more questions, discusses, and votes to recommend or not recommend. Our votes and rationales are then presented in the Finance Committee booklet. We ask questions about the funding sources, the timing, the estimates. Our votes are recorded in a yea, nay, abstain in the booklet. This year, the Finance Committee welcomed additional public comment periods during our reviews at both our April 2nd and April 16th meetings. Our agendas, as part of public comment, allowed for extended opportunities for residents to come and ask questions and get their questions answered during meetings. In both cases, no members of the public came. We tried our best to create a presentation tonight to answer as many of those potential questions as we thought may come up. When, after we take the votes on the, on the Finance Committee, the Select Board again reviews the warrant they've already approved, asks questions, discusses, and votes to recommend. Their votes are yea, nay, and abstain in the booklet as well. Tonight, as you've been seeing, the Select Board will make motions. The motions are what we actually are voting on tonight. For the financial matters, it'll include the amount and the funding source. Those will also be up on the board, and we will then vote there. The town meeting is to remember that you're an appropriating body. The town meeting here has to approve funding before they can go out to bid. The town money, meeting doesn't determine the particulars of these projects. We don't get to decide the colors of the turnout gear or the materials used. Those are, we are here to approve funding only, to allow the town to go out to bid for these. Tonight, after a motion is made and seconded, the floor will be open for discussion. Moderator is in charge, and if you wish to speak, please approach a microphone. Once recognized, state your name and address for the record, make your comment. I understand there's a timer here as well. If there are questions, they will be addressed by members of the Finance Committee, Town Council, or moderator, or the other recognized people who may have the answers to your question. So with that, we will head into the operating budget. This year, we will see, here we are showing the graphical increase in our budget over the past five years. Overall, Newberry's operating expenditures are projected to increase by approximately 5% or 1.168806 over FY '24. As Alicia mentioned, this is a balanced budget and within allowable limits of Proposition Two and a Half. The FY 2025 operating budget will be voted on in Article Five and has been prepared in full accordance with the town's financial management policies that were adopted in The Select Board, Finance Committee, and all town administrators have worked with the town administrator to develop a balanced budget, and the expenditures for 2025 were realistically budgeted and estimated and revenues conservatively projected. And while the town administrator is responsible for developing a balanced budget, she does not do it alone. The elected officials, the five members of your Select Board, actually set the budget priorities in January. At the same time, the budgeting process is happening in, within the department heads, within town government. Those doing the work to support our town are the building blocks of the budget. They put through their estimates, their wants, their needs, and then things are pulled back to make it so it works for the balanced budget. There's also many pieces of outside information that come in that impact our budget: health insurance rates, rates for insurance on other places, and of course, our education budget, which is, makes up 50% of our operating budget. So what we also need to know is that the budget is not only reviewed once a year and developed, it's looked at every month. We run those, the Finance Committee is responsible for looking at the budget and the expenditures and making sure things are staying in line. Our town accountants and the entire financial department does a wonderful job. It has come a long way from about 12, 13 years ago when we did not have the same, sorry, fiscal oversight. This year, our operating budget is a 5% increase over FY '24, and that's driven in large part by some big changes. Our education costs were up 7%, so a little bit higher. That is, a $12.4 million of our budget is education cost. The Triton budget was up, up around $800,000 over last year. Whittier, $14,000, and Essex Tech, $3,000. Also, seeing a good increase year over year is public safety. This was an increase of $186,000 over FY '24, largely driven by increases in salaries and wages for the police and fire. This is, includes increases for them in both training and call wages, and a lease for a new fire apparatus. Employee benefits is also up, driven by health insurance premium increases. Our general government is 3%, an increase of $93,000. This is an increase to lease, the new lease for the 12-countway location will provide, is a new lease, which we had to go back out for this year. It is a three-year lease with two one-year renewals. It is set to accommodate slightly more space to maintain the needs for the town offices in rented space for the next three to five years. The amount that the space increased is less than one 10-by-20-foot room. We are minimumly increasing our leased space in order to better accommodate the working conditions of our town employees and to provide much-needed meeting space to allow for better service to the public and needs in Town Hall and in its location at Kentway. Additionally, we also have had the welcoming of an assistant town administrator, not an assistant to the town administrator, but a professional assistant town administrator. And this restructuring of roles after the departure of a Select Board admin was done within budgetary limitations and without requesting any additional funds. This is a well-deserved role in our town that we needed to have additional oversight, and we were able to stretch that role into having some additional duties. Also, I should let you know that the salaries and wages for non-represented, so non-union employees, was, were issued 2% increase across the board. We did also have collective bargaining with three unions this year for the library, the police, and fire departments. Looking at the operating budget as a pie, again, 51% of our education costs come from education costs. That is where we work with the Triton budget, and then also Whittier and Essex Tech. And speaking of the Triton budget, I wanted to pass along an update from Brian Forgeit regarding the Triton middle and high school building project. The short story is, there is currently no project planned for, designed, budgeted, or scoped out in any way in the works for Triton at this time. Why, you may ask? It's a little bit of a story. But a comprehensive facilities assessment was completed in 2019 and detailed in excess of $60 million worth of needed repairs. Since many of these repairs would be done on systems or structures that were no longer needed, fixing them would not make sense. The school committee engaged in extensive discussions with town officials through the District Communications Committee. That district communication is made up of the three towns of the Triton District, Newberry, Rowley, Salisbury, with members of the Select Boards and Finance Committees represented on the DCC. The collective belief was that a larger renovation in partnership with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or the MSBA, made the most sense. There's a larger scope required when working with the MSBA, because we will have to study all options, including a full knockdown rebuild solution, but it comes with the benefit of having roughly 50% of the project costs paid by the state, and this is an opportunity that the three communities thought was too good to pass up. All three town Select Boards approved the submission of an application to the MSBA. The application cycle for the MSBAs are, they need to be, a statement of interest or an SOI has to be submitted before April of the year, and you find out in December. Triton suggested submitted a statement of interest in April of 2022, and in December '22, was, found out we were not welcomed in. April of 2023, we received, we submitted a statement of interest. December 2023, we were not welcomed. Here, March into April of 2024, another statement of interest has been submitted, and we are awaiting a decision. Unfortunately, just because we may have missed the cut, every year it's a reevaluation. So, this year, we're not just pursuing one path, there's a second path as well. As the application looks at the pool of applicants, fresh and new each year, being just below the cut line for one year doesn't mean a district is at the top of the list for the following year. Rather, the whole group of applications for that following year is looked upon and ranked according to need. To that end, there's always a good chance that there are districts with greater needs that would be funded before Triton. To that end, the district has formed a facility subcommittee, and the first task will look at possible options, in particular, to have a Plan B, ready to go in December, to have all of our options open if we learn Triton has been or has not been accepted into the MSBA core section, to our program. So as we look at items tonight, there are no items on here for a capital project at Triton at this time, but we wanted to make that clear, and I thank you, Superintendent Forgeit, for supplying me those remarks and that synopsis. Forgeit for supplying me those remarks and that synopsis. Onto our revenues. Revenues, this is not really a different pie than we've seen in the past. Property taxes continue to make up the vast majority of our revenues at 74%. We look towards property taxes, and this is limited to our 2.5% annual increase plus any new growth or driven by new construction. It's the largest single source of revenue for the town and historically provides between 75% and 80% of the town's operating budget. This year, our projection is within the allowable 2.5% is $491,709 in, that would be the increase in the tax base, and $220,000 in potential new growth, anticipated new growth. State aid is only 4% of the revenues, and this year, we are going to be tapping into some other available funds. Hire this year is, it represents monies in various special revenue funds, revolving funds, certified free cash, and the stabilization fund. So we will be used, in 2025, these funds will be used for capital asset replacements and To give everyone a sense of where we are in these funds, the free cash and stabilization are, make up the bulk of it. Currently, there's $3,504,711 in our free cash certification, but more on that later. Stabilization, tonight, we start out with a balance just over $200,000, and there will be one article on tonight to add another $100,000 to our stabilization fund. It takes a majority of town meeting vote to put money into the stabilization fund, and a two-thirds majority vote to move any money out of stabilization. We will not be proposing moving any out of stabilization this evening. Now, free cash. After some emails I received last year, and this has been a topic of discussion in the Finance Committee meetings for anyone who's watched the recordings, I thought it was helpful to point out that free cash is not slang, spin, or colorful language, or talking frivolously about taxpayer money. It is, in fact, a real thing in municipal finance. As defined, free cash is a revenue source that results from the calculation as of July 1 of a community's remaining unrestricted fund from its operations of a previous fiscal year based on the balance sheet as of June 30. It typically includes an actual receipts in excess of revenues, estimates, and unspent amounts in departmental budgets, line items for the year just ended, plus unexpended free cash from the previous year. Free cash is offset by property tax receivables and certain deficits, and as a result, can be a negative number. And once upon a time in Newberry, it was a negative number. That was not prudent financial planning. So, one thing to remember, in the green checks here, it's certified by the state at the end of each fiscal year. It can only be spent by the majority of voters at a town meeting, and we aim to have at least $1 million in that account after town meeting appropriations each year. Also, according to our own financial principles, adopted by the Select Board in 2017 and followed today, the town in Newberry shall not use free cash to fund the operating budget. So I think it's helpful to understand the cycle. So as I said, the fiscal year starts on July 1, ends on June 30. So each year is our new fiscal year. Our certification from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts comes in the October-November timeframe, typically October, sometimes the first week in November, and it is, so during that time, what we are doing is from the 30th of June, the books are closed, and reconciliation of accounts is completed. The town accountant, finance department, works on this to close out all of those things. So if we budgeted, you know, $1,000 more than we needed in a line item, that $1,000 goes to that, what will end up as free cash. It goes to the state, that number comes to us. Between November and April, nothing happens to that money, it sits there, because it can only be appropriated at a town meeting. So if we look at that for this year, we started off, if we could advance one slide, thank you, we started off the year with close to $2.2 million as our starting balance in free cash. So leaving, that was leaving last year's, at the close of 2023, the revenues minus expenses came in at about $1.3 million. These funds last year were derived from the collection of delinquent town taxes, revenues in excesses of initial estimates, and other budgetary surpluses. Projects that come in under budget or get grant funding are offset and go back into, go back into free cash. Projects that don't move forward for one reason or another are also closed out. When a project is closed out, the town accountant is the person who says that a project is happening, done, and complete. Also, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is not a rubber stamp of our figures. Our budget estimates, both revenues and expenses, are carefully reviewed, and if they are not accurate, meaning that they are not within 10% of actuals, concerns are raised and we are brought under increased scrutiny. This has not happened. Newberry's free cash certification is another independent party verifying that Newberry's budgeting is proper and comprehensive. This year, this means that we added $1.3 million to free cash so that we have a today balance of $3,504,712. And tonight, we have $2,417,499 in estimated free cash expenditures between Article VII, which is our OPEB liability, and Article 13. Now, this is here to show you, this is how it goes in a wave every year. So if you see that that $3 million mark is not unheard of, and you see it goes up, and then back down with the expenditures, and then sits, plateaus, that's our starting point each year, this is a familiar pattern. So I just want to make sure that what we see here, we do know that we see some anomalies between 2020 and 2022, and that reflects the impacts of COVID. Some expenses were lower in these years, and we also had the influx of approximately $2 million in ARPA funds that Select Board Chair Greco mentioned, that we used for projects that we otherwise would have used free cash. So going into tonight's reconciliation and financial management is that we're going to be looking at Article 13, which is for $2.2 million of capital or one-time needs, and the OPEB Article VII for $200,000. We are endeavoring to maintain a target minimum balance of $1 million in free cash after town meeting appropriations. Keeping $1 million in free cash helps our town maintain its AAA bond rating. This means, when the time comes to borrow, Newberry will get the best rates. This will benefit all taxpayers. It's in our best interest to stick with our financial policies so that it doesn't cost us more money to borrow when we need to down the road. Moving into the details of Article 13 of the free cash article, these are all, the top items in orange here are ones that have come up through capital planning. The capital purchases for the fire department, library, Newberry Elementary have come up through and been thoroughly vetted by the capital planning process. The lower green schoolhouse came in at a little bit more accelerated as the need was highlighted by the Historical Commission in early 2024, which meant they missed the typical deadline of November 2023 to be bringing items to the capital planning. When items are brought to capital planning, they're brought by the department that needs them. They need to request the purchases, have details of their ask and their needs and cost estimates. These are detailed requests to ascertain the need, cost, useful life, and costs if not replaced or required. There are reviews to assess these, get documentations. The Capital Planning Commission runs this process. They also have a score that allows us to have an objective way to score the projects for prioritization and work within our available funding sources. Tonight, I will not go deep into each item, as we will discuss those during the Article 13 one moved, but I am going to address one of the biggest questions I've heard: where are the bids? How can we be asking for money without bids? These are best estimates, based on the scoping and projects. They vary where we get the bids from, because we cannot go out to a formal RFP, we cannot get formal bids until the money is appropriated at town meeting. After the money is appropriated, this is when the RFPs will be issued. Suppliers will be selected based on specifications and lowest bid. So for example, let's take the turnout gear for the fire department. It's $35,000. If this is approved by a town meeting, the fire department will go out to bid, evaluate the responses, and pick the one that fits the needs with the lowest budget. Now, if this amount is $32,000, we'll spend, the fire department will spend $32,000, and that remaining $3,000 will be closed out, back to free cash, and end up as part of next year's free cash. Also, another thing that happens often here is it goes out, and there's an opportunity for grant money to offset some of the funds. So in this case, say the department gets a $20,000 grant. Excellent. It only spends $15,000, then the remaining, 20, we only spend $15,000, $20,000 closes back to free cash where it was taken from. All of it stays there. The estimates presided tonight are meant to be reasonable and conservative to accomplish the job, because we cannot overspend. If the turnout gear bids come in at $38,000, they can't buy them because they only have budgeted 35. So we aim to be comprehensive to accomplish the jobs. And a reminder to us all is that town meeting is the appropriating body. The job before all of you tonight is approve the funds for appropriation. This body does not get to define the project, materials used, or how much can be spent from what funding source. We don't get to pick the color of the turnout gear. The other two items on the Article 13 is our OPEB actuarial evaluation. This has to be done every two years to ascertain a town's unfounded liability in Article VII for $7,000, and the unpaid bill for $499. This happens because the fiscal year closes on June 30. The town's allowed to play bills through July 15, and one bill arrived late. In this case, it was a job advertisement in the local newspaper, and this bill, in order to be paid, requires a four-fifth majority. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approving Articles 7 and 13, and anticipating these articles passing, this would leave us with the remaining, remaining amounts in the following items: free cash will be left with just under $1.1 million, stabilization will have over $300,000. We are only adding money to stabilization. We will also be talking about revolving funds. These are ones that we've seen every year. Basically, the PEG Special Access Reserve Fund is support the PEG access service and programming. This funds the appropriations media operations, wages, equipment, various other costs associated with cable access programming. Article 9, it will use to fund recreation and harbor master accounts respectively. Recreation Fund relies on rental fees, and the harbor master account relies on permits and fees. Finally, the ambulance enterprise is a self-funding enterprise account. The $331,000 is the operating budget for the year. It requests the cost of presiding the service to our residents. The fund continues to be self-supporting, able to recognize a free cash balance itself of revenues in excesses, revenues in excess of expenses, that can be yours to support the ambulance service. This year, it will be for a lease payment on a new ambulance and the purchase of a power load stretcher. We will need to move and pass Article 11 in order to allow the Select Board to enter into the lease agreement to pass Article 12. Thank you for putting up with this long-winded presentation, but I feel it's good to set up the right understanding of what can and can be not be done under municipal finance. And as we head into the motions tonight, as we head into the motions tonight, please be kind and courteous to one another. Assume positive intent of those speaking, including our town employees, appointed and elected officials. Everyone here endeavors to do their best work for the common good of our entire community.
Thank you, Erica. I think you can all see that our finances are in good hands with the Finance Committee that we have led by Erica. We're going to have, Leslie Matthews is going to read the motion about the appropriations on Article 5. And I would say that if you look through the line items and see something in there that you had a question on, you can, after we get the motion in and we get a second, I will ask for discussion and debate, at which point you can speak about anything you wanted to hold. Please wait till after that. I would also say that if you look at the first line item here, the moderator stipend, it's $500. I would say, based on the way I handled that last article, I'm grossly overpaid. No, not looking for any seconds on that now, come on. Okay, so, without any further ado, Leslie Matthews, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $24,141,000 and transfer $443,938 from the Special Assessment Fund to fund the operation of the town in fiscal year
Okay. Any discussion or debate? This is the time for anyone who has any holds on any particular line item you want to talk about. Where is it?
Jim Moran, 104 Realm Street. Dick, good evening, thank you.
Hi, Jim.
How are you tonight?
I'm good, thanks.
Good. I have problems with this amount, and I don't know the best way to go about it, but I'd like to amend the motion to put in the number of $23.415 million, which is the same amount of last year's budget. Now, on discussions, I'd like to start off with first asking the town what their expected expenditures will be through the next two months to close out this year, and how much
Motion is for next year's budget, Jim.
I understand that, but to establish the baseline for my number, I'm asking the town, if they apparently do not have it, using the expenditure report through March, I conclude that we're going to have $3 million left over from the current budget, based on the percentage reporting in the expenditure report. Does anybody up front have a copy of the April expenditure report?
The discussion is only on the proposed budget, and I think that Erica has very clearly outlined what the budget is and why. So I think, if there is a, if there is a particular item that you need a hold on, Jim, or anyone else does, please let us know now.
I'd like to put a hold on each item and bring the total to the amount I just talked about, a $23.415 million.
Is that your motion to limit the budget to that amount?
That's correct.
Is there a second on that? Okay, we have to vote on this. Jim has asked, after listening to a very detailed explanation of why this budget, he has asked that we reduce it. So, ready to vote? Can we put it up?
Dick, there should be some more discussion, maybe others have discussion points too, but I brought it up, and I don't know that anybody else has had a chance to discuss this.
Jim, I would hope everybody had a chance to go through the budget and look at the line items, that's why we all have it. I would ask now that we vote on this. I think it's pretty clear. Speak again about what you would like it reduced to. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. All in, have you got the vote up? Okay. Everybody in favor of reducing it would be a yes, of course, and leaving it as it is would be a no. Please vote. Thank you all. Okay, we're back now to the main motion here, and is, are there any holds here? And anybody who's gone through this line item, line by line, does anybody have any holds they would like to make? Seeing none? We can vote. Thank you very much. Thank you again for the thorough explanation of the budget. Pretty complicated, but I think it was made very clear. Okay. Article 6. Yes, Article 6. And that would be Dana, would you please read that article?
Yes, sir. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be added to the stabilization fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or debate? This is a simple majority vote. You want to put it up, please? All set? Let it rip, vote.
On the stabilization fund, I'd make a motion to add $800,000 to that stabilization fund, which is currently at 200,000, to bring it to a million dollars, which is what the town's target is under their financial management plan.
Jim, we're gonna vote this article. I think everybody has heard the, what is recommended and why, so...
I just made a motion to revise that.
Point of order.
I called for a vote before you made that motion. We need to vote. We asked for discussion or debate. We asked for, we didn't get any, so we called for a vote. Now we vote, please. Okay, here you go. 246 to 39, it passes. Thank you. Article 7. Jeff Walker, please.
I move, I move that the town transfer the sum of $200,000 from free cash to be added to other post-employment benefit trust account.
Have a second? Any discussion or debate? Seeing none? Let's vote. 49, no. Thank you. Article 8. Alicia, please.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $85,000 from the receipts reserved cable television PEG Access Special Revenue Fund to support PEG Access Service in Programming.
Have a second? Any discussion or debate? Seeing none? Let's vote. 54, no. Thank you. Article 9. Bill DeMaio.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the total expenditures for the following revolving funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, to be expended in accordance with Chapter 35 of the Code of the Town of Newbury. Recreation revolving fund, $50,000. Municipal Waterway Improvement and Maintenance Fund, $59,552.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or debate? Yes, yes, 2024, yes. Okay, let's vote. 284, yes, 27, no. Thank you. Article 10. Leslie Matthews, please.
I move that the town appropriate the following sums of money to operate the ambulance enterprise fund. Salaries and wages, $115,500. Expenses, $98,364. Capital outlay, $12,000. Debt service, zero. Insurance, $5,000. Medicare, $2195. Indirect costs, $62,518. Extraordinary unforeseen, $12,000. And prior year deficit, zero, for a total of $307,577.
Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Finish, Leslie.
Thank you. And further, that 307, 577 be raised as follows. Department receipts, 307, 577.
Second. I withdraw my second.
Can you read these numbers up here instead of these numbers down here?
Oh, okay. Sure.
I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from the available funds the following sums or any other sums to operate the ambulance enterprise. Salaries and wages, $125,895. Expenses, $107, 215,000. Capital outlay, $12,000. Debt service, zero. Insurance, $5,000. Medicare, $2195. Indirect costs, $66,904. Extraordinary unforeseen, $12,000. Prior year deficit, zero, which the total would come to 331,209. And further, that 331,209 be raised as follows. Departmental receipts, $331,209. Or take any other action in relation thereto.
Second.
Any discussion or debate on this? Self-funding? Okay. Let's, you ready? Let's vote, please. Thank you. Article 11. Dana.
Motion. I move that the town vote to authorize a Select Board to enter into lease purchase financing agreements for the purchase of a new ambulance and a wildland urban interface fire apparatus.
Second.
So this is a, an article that is sort of like borrowing, which means we need a two-thirds majority on this one. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none? Let's vote. I think it passes. Thank you. I'm sorry. 282, yes, 29, no. Thank you. Article 12. Jeff Walker, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $146,043 from the Enterprise, Ambulance Enterprise Free Cash Account to lease and fully equip an ambulance and purchase a power load stretcher.
Second.
Any discussion or debate? Seeing none? We can vote. 298, yes and 18, no. Thank you very much. Article number 13. And this is, this is kind of in two parts because the unpaid bill, for us to pay an unpaid bill takes a four-fifths majority, where the rest of it is a simple majority. So I think we'll vote on, can we, we separate them and vote on the, on...
We have two motions.
Two motions. We have two motions here. So, Alicia, you want to give me the motion on the $498?
499.
499.
I'm gonna move, no, I'm gonna move the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $2,217,000 for the items noted in the Finance Committee Appropriations booklet.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
That's the, everything except the payment for last year. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mo, was there a second? Did you get a second?
Yes. Now, discussion or debate?
Thank you, sir. I would like to put a hold on two of the items on that list, one being the elementary school roof replacement, and the other one being the elementary school HVAC system.
Are there any other holes?
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to put a hold on all the items, go through them individually.
All the items? You want to put a hold on all the items, Jim?
Yes, sir.
And could you give me some logic on why?
Sure. Item one, the 60,000 for the floor, that's to jack out and replace. I talked to DPW, and I'd suggest you just use wood shims for now, in light of the fact you're talking about building a new fire station in the future. Seems like very wasted money for very little that can be done. A few Boy Scouts could be down there on Saturday to take care of that job.
Keep going, Jim.
On the 35,000, I guess I ask how many sets are there and what's the unit cost of each set? The fire department turnout gear.
Okay. Next.
Do we have any answer to that question?
Well, just, I want to know all the ones you have a hold.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Wait a minute, Tracy has an answer on that. Thank you, Tracy.
I'm gonna withdraw the item for $7,000, as I was explained earlier, for the actuarial evaluation being done every two years. Moving on to the fourth item, the 125K for the library. My suggestion is you hire an engineer and get him to put together proposal. Right now, I believe that number is coming from a single source, and it seems to be in question. That's why, that's my issue.
We already have a hold on the library roof replacement and on the elementary school...
Now, the item five is a 650 for the library roof. I understand that's a, for a 50-year metal roof. Again, I'd like to think an engineer could put together proposal based on some sculpt and come up with a number. Again, it's, it's a lot of money with no definition. Items, item six is the 150,000 for the roof replacement. I'll, I'll remove my hold on that after discussion with the DPW. I'm fine with that. I'm gonna release that, that hold.
Okay, the HVAC, which is already on hold.
Okay, the, that's a million dollars. Now, this, this number, so the voters here understand is only half the cost. The other half will come next year. This, again, is a sole source. Again, we should have an engineer. Standalone engineer give us an estimate of value for this cost. Wouldn't take much, but then it takes out the question of having one person tell us how much it may be.
Elementary school...
That's the HVAC at the elementary school.
The parking lot, no, the parking lot, the elementary school parking lot.
The next one is the item eight, the 90,000 for the parking lot. I, I understand that would be a complete mill, they'd mill the whole lot. I'd like somebody to tell me how many tons that is, and how many dollars per ton would it be cost to put it down.
Lower Green Schoolhouse Roof Replacement.
$100,000 seems like an inordinate high amount. My understanding, the roof's gonna be stripped, and the, it'll be, the new material will be either composite or red cedar. There's no quote, and the order of magnitude came from the material supplier. Again, we should have better information in hand before spending $100,000 on a small roof.
Tracy, can you handle these questions? James Saret? Okay, sure. Thank you, Tracy.
Mr. Moderator, I'm behind you. Dana?
Yes.
I, I would just, I would like to just address my two holds, if I may. I, I heard some people in the crowd that were asking why I motioned that.
Yes, please.
Thank you. My thoughts on the roof replacement at the elementary school and also the HVAC system, as, as Jim said, it's, the HVAC system's gonna be a $2 million bill. And right now, the town is proposing to ask you for a million dollars tonight, and then a second million dollars next year to complete that project. My thought process is, I would like to fully fund that project tonight, because even though it may not be able to be completed in one fiscal year, the money would already be appropriated for that completion of that job. Next year, when we come to you again...
Through the what fund?
We, you know, who knows where that other million dollars is gonna come from? It, and I'm not trying to scare anybody, but it could be a debt exclusion to pay, to pay for that, to pay for that HVAC in the roof. My proposal is to fully, and, and the, the roof itself, I think there's about $300,000 left to finish the roof, I'm not sure.
450,000.
450?
Three more years.
Yeah, th- thank you. Whoever said that. What I would, wanted to see was that the additional funding to replace the roof and the additional million dollars to complete the HVAC, or not complete, but to fully fund the HVAC system, come out of the Town Hall Capital Improvement Fund. Capital Improvement Fund. That's my motion.
It's out of, yes, yeah. The motion is out of the scope of what we're doing here with this article, so we cannot vote on it, but we can get an explanation, which Tracy spoke about, from the gentleman in the back. He's gonna step up to the microphone and try to address each of these issues. Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Sarette, Newbury DPW Director. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if there's any particular order, anybody wants to go, but I can just start with the school parking lot. The, the number on that basically just comes from the square yards. We have a bid contract for paving and milling, so it's basically in the, it's tooth dollars and thirty, and eighty-nine cents a square yard for milling and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents for top with tack. That can adjust a little bit on the price of liquid asphalt, but that's the, the bid price.
Can everyone hear?
So-
Get close to that mic, my friend.
All right, sorry. So, the, the parking lot basically just comes from the square footage of the parking lot and we already have bid out, laying the asphalt, you know, townwide, which is eighty dollars a ton with tack, and the milling is two dollars and eighty-nine cents a square yard. So basically, it's just taking the parking lot dimensions and that's how we came up with that number.
Okay.
The fire station floor, I don't know if anyone else has seen it. It's, it's kind of pitched and I really can't even describe it. I've never seen anything like it, but it's really starting to crack and break up. You know, the front's got a pretty good hole. So basically, it's thirty-seven hundred square feet. It'd be a case of jackhammering out the floor, regrading it, be putting back a six-inch floor to cover the weight of the, some of the new trucks are heavier than their old equipment. So basically, that's where that number came from. I don't know. And then the NES roof, you know, section, that's the continuing that we've done it three years and this year and two more. I don't know, like, just a quick, what, what it is, is basically, we talk with what sections a roof has left, with the school where they're having the most trouble. We infrared the roof and we can find where the wet spots in the insulation are. We go in, we cut the insulation out, make all the repairs, put the roof back together, and then we put down a polyurea, polyurea coating, which is one coating, you know, there's no seams. We, we do sections that we can do the whole thing and, you know, then that coating gives us an extra fifteen to twenty years of life.
Does the work on the school have to be done in the summer when there is, or no kids in school?
That's what we, yes, that's when we try to get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then the library HVAC, we did work with one sole person, his name's Fred Doherty, with Research and Energy Consulting. He's a municipal energy efficiency subcontractor. So he, I went out there with him, we went through all the units, and basically, if we switch over to heat pumps, which are more efficient, we then become eligible for a bunch of incentives. So, you know, if we, we, and the good news is, is with technology, I don't know if anyone knows the library, but the air handlers are in tough spots, you'd be cutting the CONs out to get them out, but we were able to change the coils to accommodate the new freon with the heat pumps. So it'd be a matter of changing the units outside, they flush the line sets to the air handlers, change the coils, and that's, that's what the scope of work on that is. And he also mentioned winterization, weatherization incentives, so kind of like if we work, and there's incentives on that, if we work on sealing up the doors, windows, stuff like that, we can also become eligible for even a bigger incentive on the equipment for the, for the heating and cooling system. The, the library roof, I worked with Galen Roof, they've done, helped us with some of the stuff at the elementary school, but that would, would consist of a metal roof with standing seam panels. I, I know it, it is expensive, that's just, you know, what they estimated the price to be at, to, to do the library over with a metal roof with a fifty-year life expectancy. And the NHS HVAC is similar, I worked with Fred Doherty. We did have another company do an envelope kind of study on the building, so then I reached out to him to see what his thoughts were. And I don't want to get into too long, but the company that did the study, not that they did anything wrong, their, their attack at doing the system was basically going with heat pumps as well, but with the heat pumps, they oversize them because in the, in the winter, like the twenty days a year you might have that are real cold, the heat pumps struggle making the heat. But as far as summertime, they can cool no problem. So what they were doing was deleting the furnaces and oversizing the heat pumps on the roof, so bigger units than we have now. And what Fred Doherty had proposed is keeping the same size units up top, but not getting rid of the furnaces, because then there's the twenty days in the winter where maybe we get that cold stretch, we can run the furnaces to help, you know, if, if the heat pumps did need a little help, there's where it's getting its help with those furnaces. We already got it all plumbed in the building, it's all there. Why not just keep, keep that for those twenty days? Maybe, maybe not even, it depends, you know, if we get that cold stretch. And that works similar, too, all depending on the size of the units. There's like twenty-five hundred dollars per ton, which is kind of how the equipment's calculated for the cooling. So for every ton of cooling we have, there's roughly twenty-five hundred dollar incentive. Could be a little more, could be a little less, depending on the size of the units. Kind of the same thing, reusing the line sets that are buried in the building that might be tough to get at. Instead of ripping them all out, they can clean them, so the new freons work. And kind of the same thing with that, if we did, maybe looked into that winterization, weatherization incentive, that could help us bring the cost down on that equipment as, as well. So if you have any other questions, I can get to that. And then the, the Lower Green School, I, I do agree, it's a, it's a lot of money, but I did reach out to the manufacturer just because the composite shingles, there's really no one around here that I know of or could find that has done them. So I reached out to them to get a price on, you know, the shingles, roughly what it's been costing. But also in that, you know, if we're doing the roof over, there's, there's trim on the building that may need replacing, there's, there is some metal on some of that trim. It's old trim. I don't have the right terminology, but the gable ends are kind of a rounded wood, so it might be tough to match, or do we have to take it all off? What's underneath the wooden shingles on the roof now? I'm not saying that it is all rotten, but, you know, those are the things we don't know until we get there. And we've, we've, we've been pricing some trim work that needs to be done at the Grange Hall badly, too, and been scared at the pricing we've got on, on that. Okay, and I-
Thank you.
I think that, that's, that's it.
Nicely done.
Channing Howard, sixty-one Central Street, Chairman of the Historical Commission in reference to the Lower Green Schoolhouse roof. We do have two quotes for the roof this week I obtained in time for the meeting. One for fireproof red cedar and one for simulated cedar shake with a fifty-year warranty. So we, we are in the ballpark of about seventy thousand dollars to complete that roof, and that would give us a roof that would last us entirety with a fifty-year warranty. So we, we're doing our homework on that and we'll, we'll certainly be able to chisel that number down.
And the Historical Society is okay with either the natural or the composite?
We're aiming for the composite for its lifespan because the building is very sun-baked on one side and soaking wet on the other. So where, where we, our first request was for the simulated shingles because of the nature of the, it's surrounded by trees, we've got a giant pile of moss growing on the back pile, back of the building, and that's where we're looking for a simulated shingle that'll last fifty years. But we've heard people talking about replacing it with the cedar shingles, so the building inspector does require us to have fireproof cedar, so that means we have to go to the red Aspen cedar. So that pushes the price back up. So prices I got this week from a Boston company was seventy-nine thousand for the Aspen red cedar and seventy thousand for the simulated shakes with a fifty-year warranty.
Thank you.
So the Historical Commission will oversee this to the end.
Thanks very much.
Wally Zeiler, two thirty-five High Road, I'm also the deputy fire chief. In answer to the thirty-five thousand dollars for the structural turnout gear, we're hoping, basing on pricing, to get ten to eleven sets.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, behind you, over here.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to thank everyone for those explanations, and I think you can kind of understand from the explanations, and Erica, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are up to figures that are in front of you. And if those up to figures, if it's less, if, if everything comes in less, that will return to Free Cash.
Jeff, you're absolutely correct. That is what we went over at the beginning, that these amounts are, there will be formal bids that will be overseen. Fire Department will be, all of this will be to a public bid process and in accordance with municipal practices. So these are allowing us to actually go out to bid. Without appropriations at town meeting, we can't go out to bid. So that's where we stand. Also, I understand that the point of order, that moving money from the town hall account is not allowed. Also, if we are to go forward with adding another million dollars to the elementary school HVAC replacement, I don't know where you're proposing that money comes from. It would put us- Town hall account, which is not allowed to be used for this.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I don't see any more discussion or debate. I think we've had a lot, and I appreciate everybody's input, particularly appreciate the detailed explanation on what these numbers are for. So, have you got it up? Is it up? It is up. The first one, the big one, the big one. Not the four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, no. Everything else, and that's a simple vote. All in favor? Two eighty-two, yes. Thirty-six, no. Thank you very much. Now we gotta talk about the four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is an unpaid bill. And because it's an unpaid bill, we need a four-fifths vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from Free Cash the sum of four hundred and ninety-nine dollars to pay the unpaid bill as noted in the Finance Committee Appropriations booklet.
Any discussion or debate? No, hearing none. I'm sorry. Is there any discussion or debate? I don't think so. Thank you. Okay, let's vote, please. We're all set. Thank you very much, folks. Yeah, it's three oh seven to twelve. Okay. Article fourteen. Martha? Martha, you gonna do an explanation here, I think? Sure, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Select Board members, Finance Committee members, members of the town of Newbury. My name is Pete Pecos. I am the vice chair for the Planning Board. I will be happy to.
Yep, close to that mic. Pretend you're a rock star, right up and swallow it.
I will try. My name is Pete Pecos. I am the vice chair for the Planning Board, and I'll be giving the report tonight for Larry Murphy, who could not be here. Mr. Moderator, before I begin the report, I would ask for a motion of, of personal privilege?
I'm sorry, I don't understand that.
I, I'm asking for a point of personal privilege.
Point of personal privilege? Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize two individuals who the town has lost over the past year of 2023. They were John O'Connell and George Morse. John served on the board from May of 2010 through 2017. He was a steward for our community, its natural heritage, and a staunch ally for our storm water management program. I have many fond memories of doing sidewalks and walking through the woods of Newbury with John. George Morse served on our board from October of 2012 until his death in October of 2023. George was a gentleman, an advocate for the community, and a guardian for the town code and by law. I would turn to George for his guidance, direction, and navigation through difficult situations. Both of these men were mentors as I began my public service to the town of Newbury and continued on the Planning Board. Our community was very fortunate to have such leaders.
Thank you, thank you.
With that being said, the report for the Planning Board regarding Article fourteen, MBTA Community Multi-Family Overlay District Zoning Planning Board Report. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District zoning bylaw on Wednesday, March twentieth, 2024, and voted unanimously to approve and recommend this article and propose appears on the town warrant. I just wanted to take a couple moments to give some background to this. The MBTA Communities Multi-Family zoning legislation was signed into law by Governor Baker in January of 2021. It came onto the Planning Board's radar screen shortly thereafter in 2021. Draft guidelines for compliance with this law were issued by the State's Department of Housing and Community Development in December of 2021. A presentation of the MBTA Communities was made to the Select Board in March of 2022. Planning Board submitted a comment letter to the state in March of 22 regarding this. Revised guidelines from the state, final guidelines came to us in August of 2022. At that point in time, Newbury was identified as an adjacent small community. Now, this will be explained in our presentation. However, I wanted to give you a timetable of where we are. Newbury has met all of requirements for the town to achieve what is called intimate compliance with the law as per the guidelines. We have submitted an action plan in January of 2023, which identified zoning strategy to be used, which is an overlay district, areas in town to be considered for multi-family housing, and a timeline and actions to achieve full compliance. Our action plan was approved by the state in March of 2023. Full compliance is required by December thirty-first of 2025. It is in our action plan that the board proposed zoning actions at this meeting, which is the 2020, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Our planning staff has applied for and received grant funding for technical assistance, and we have contracted with MVCP for technical assistance in July of 2023. I would like everyone in this room to know that there have been tireless and numerous hours by Planning Board, Planning Board staff through the years of 2022, 2023, and 2024 to bring us where we are today. We have worked closely with Ian Burns and Kayla Rennie of MBCC Communities and Economic Development Program, and they are going to be here tonight for a presentation, and I would like to introduce Ian at this time. And I would like to introduce Ian at this time.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Ian Burns. I am the manager of the Community and Economic Development Department at the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. For those that are unaware of who the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is, we are a public agency that supports the 15 cities and towns of the Merrimack Valley region. We do not write the state laws or the regulations that we are going to talk about tonight, but our role is to help our cities and towns understand what the law is and to find a path to compliance and to ultimately get a vote here tonight at town meeting for town meeting voters to vote up or down on the current proposal for compliance with MBTA communities. So I've been asked here today to talk a little bit about what the regulations require of Newbury and what the proposal is here today. And as the vice chairman of the planning board mentioned, it's been a long process. So we're going to kind of work through what was discussed and what the proposal is tonight before voting on it. So the slides up there will guide the conversation. The very first slide here that you'll notice, we just have some important definitions. Many folks are probably familiar with the basics of zoning, but just wanted to make sure everybody understood what is being voted on tonight and some of those key terms. Number one, zoning, as many of you know, is what uses are allowed in town and where. It says what can be built and where. What we're talking about tonight is what's called an overlay zoning district. An overlay zoning district is a zoning district that's laid on top of existing zoning. So when we talk about the added uses under this new bylaw, every underlying use will still be allowed. When we talk about multifamily housing as per this law, we're talking about structures that contain three or more dwelling units, which could be apartments or condominiums. We're also talking tonight about by right development, which is a requirement as part of the law. By right means development that does not require a special permitting process. However, by right development still has to go to the planning board to go through a site plan review process. It must adhere to building code, and it must adhere to all environmental laws on the state and federal level. Finally, we're going to talk about a term that's called gross density or density. This is part of the law that we're going to discuss. Density is a calculation of dwelling units, and it's units per acre. So it essentially just takes a fraction of the number of housing units on a plot of land divided by the acres of that land. So I won't go into this in detail because the vice chairman of the planning board mentioned it very well. 3A or MBTA communities was a law passed in 2021. Some essential pieces here was passed pretty, by large majorities, by the legislature. Governor Baker actually issued the initial regulations, and now Governor Healy is the one that is carrying those regulations drafted by the Baker administration forward. It requires communities to adopt zoning regulations that allow for multifamily housing by right in at least one zoning district. It is that requirement stands for every city and town that has an MBTA transit stop or is bordering a community with an MBTA transit stop. So Newbury, as you border both Rowley and Newbury Port, you are what's considered an adjacent small-town community because you are next to communities that have an MBTA transit stop. A very important part of this whole thing is that the law requires the development of a zoning district. It does not require construction of dwelling units. It does not require production to actually happen. It only requires zoning to be in place. Once the zoning is in place, it is totally up to the free market, housing development, property owners, if development actually happens. The town is not required to build any units. As we've said, Newbury is defined as an adjacent small town, and under that definition, you have to pass a compliant zoning district by the end of the calendar year in 2025. Under that classification, Newbury has to accommodate a minimum of 5% of its current housing stock in A district. As we said, this is just zoning, so you have to be able to say that theoretically, if the district we're zoning over had no structures on it and a development came forward, that it could accommodate that 5% number, which equals about 154 units. So we're just saying theoretically, if there was nothing on that property today and a development came forward, would the zoning allow for that many units to be constructed? Although there are state requirements, what Newbury has flexibility over is where is chosen to have this overlay district and some of the specifications of the actual dimensional parameters. To give an example, when we talk about 15 units per acre, it's a bit small in the projector, but we wanted folks to understand what we're talking about because it can be a confusing number for density as the zoning requires us to zone for at least 15 units per acre. On the left there is a picture of what exists in Newbury today. That's in Byfield, some affordable housing there, and that's actually equals about 11 and 1/2 units per acre in density. On the right there is an example of multifamily housing in Manchester by the Sea. That multifamily housing is about 15 units per acre. We just wanted to give some visualizations that we've been talking with the planning board and other members of the public with about what it means when we say we're required to zone for about 15 units per acre and what development might come forward if any development does come forward. It does not mean that development has to be built at 15 units per acre. We just have to say that the zoning could theoretically accommodate that much. So again, we don't need to take this bullet by bullet, but we wanted to show you the extensive public engagement that has happened over the past year in order to craft this proposal that's brought before town meeting here tonight. There have been about 16 public meetings over the course of 2023 and 2024, and those public meetings have both conducted a discussion between planning board members of the proposal, and there have been public meetings where we have had open public discussion, feedback, and questions to help craft the proposal along the way. It was an extensive public process, and we received some great public feedback that helped form the proposal that is before you all here tonight. At the end or towards the end of that process, the planning board voted unanimously 5-0 to recommend this article before town meeting. The Select Board voted 4-1 to approve and recommend the article, and the Finance Committee voted 6-1 to approve and recommend the article. So a couple of things we want to mention again. I know that not everybody can read the slides in the room here tonight, but there are things that we took in mind when we were working with the planning board and when we heard from members of the public about what was important to consider when drafting these zoning districts. Number one was the amenities or the different environment that multifamily housing may eventually be around. So we thought about, is it close to the commuter rail station? Maybe in Newbury Port? Is it close to a busy road so there are easy access for cars coming in and out, and that can be handled on a high-volume road and not small side streets? We thought about if there's opportunities for having access to town amenities and town services and opportunities for pedestrian access if folks could walk to places instead of drive. The other things that were considered when drafting this zoning bylaw are really documents that have been made to guide Newbury's planning processes. So we took a look in collaboration with the planning board at a lot of documents that have been made by the town, including the master plan and the housing production plan that is currently underway. A lot of things that we noticed there was, number one, future development should be crafted along with the character of the town. Number two, we've seen a change in demographics in Newbury recently that may necessitate certain smaller types of housing development. And number three, we saw that there should be certain dimensional design parameters that fit in the neighborhoods where this is put. So all of these things were taken into account when crafting the actual legislation or the actual bylaw proposal for you here tonight. Those considerations specifically that the planning board discussed, that we discussed with the public and that we actually heard at a lot of public sessions were a few things. Number one, the aging population in Newbury, where we see 65-plus residents are going to be increasing in their share of the population to about 1/3 of Newbury's population by 2050. That's up from 14% in 2010. Number two, we've seen that residents that are looking to downsize have few options when they're looking for a smaller home in Newbury. There aren't as many smaller units around as there are larger units around in town. And so we want to ensure there may be options if folks are looking to downsize. Not everybody may be looking to downsize, but that was some of the thought process, that making sure there are those one- or two-bedroom options for folks. The other thing we've seen is that a decreasing share of 20- to 34-age residents in Newbury, that reflects trends statewide and making sure we can capture young workers and that they're not leaving the area. The last thing that we talked a lot about is the expensive new construction homes in Newbury and the recent sale homes, for-sale prices in Newbury, where we've seen sales often exceed 1 million, which makes it difficult for young families to get started in town. All of these areas were taken into consideration as we discussed the proposal with the planning board and through the public meeting process. So now let's talk a little bit about the proposed zoning here for you all tonight. So we'll show a zoomed-in version of the map soon because I know it's hard to see from all the way in the back at some places. There are two zoning areas that we're discussing tonight. Newbury North, which is up near the Newbury Port commuter rail station, and Newbury South, which is in the Byfield area. One thing that we want to highlight is all the land area we're talking tonight actually totals only about 0.37% of Newbury's total land area. So 99.6% of Newbury's land area will not be touched by these zoning districts. What's really important to highlight is that we have both A and B sub-districts in both north and south. The A sub-districts are going to be zoning sub-districts that allow for a little bit more density, and the B sub-districts are going to be districts that restrict the density a bit more in order to better reflect the character of the neighborhood that they are placed in. So as we zoom in now, these are those A sub-districts, so the sub-districts that may allow a little bit more construction than what the B sub-districts would. A, the one on the left there, that's the intersection of Route 1 and, that's the intersection of Route 1 and Middle Road and Hanover Street. And then on the right there, you have Kentway and the strip mall off of 95, located in Byfield. Key things to mention about the zoning parameters that have been drafted in this area. Number one, the max building height is three stories. We cannot have multifamily that would exceed three stories in height. Number two, the minimum open space required is 40%. So you could not have any building on 40% of the lot. There is a density cap of 17 units per acre, and so there cannot be any development that is greater than that. And parking spaces, we say an average of 1.5 spaces per unit. Really, what that means is your one-bedroom units and studio units have about one space, and your two-bedroom units and greater are required to have two parking spaces. The keys here with the As to pay attention to when we get to the difference with the Bs is that max building height of three stories and that minimum open space of 40%. And then the setbacks, where we require 25-foot side and rear yard setbacks in the A district. Now, when we look at the B sub-districts, these are located on the left. That is along Hanover Street and right next to Newbury Elementary School. That black structure that you can see on the right of that left-hand image is Newbury Elementary. And then on the right there, along Central Street, just behind the fire station, is another parcel of land for this zoning. These B sub-districts, given that they are located in some more neighborhood areas of town, have been crafted to be less dense and make sure that development is smaller scale and fits with the neighborhood. The first key piece is that that max building height is down to 2 and 1/2 stories. So if you are building above two stories, you need more dormer-type windows and tapered roof lines. The setbacks have been increased in these districts. The side and rear yard setbacks are set at 60 feet, and that is to ensure that neighboring properties and neighboring homes have a good-sized buffer between any potential future development and their property line. The minimum open space in these districts is also kept, or is required, at 50%. So half of the lots must be left as open space. And then the density cap in these districts is set at eight units per acre. So you cannot have a development larger than that. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we heard a lot of feedback on as we went through this process is we were looking at a lot of area in town relative to what the state's actual requirements are. So working with the planning board, working with members of the public in public meetings, we looked at about five or six sites originally that were then tailored down to four sites that we're talking about here tonight. Those four sites, as we discussed in many of our meetings, do constitute a bit more than what the actual minimum state requirements are for this zoning. The reason for that is multitude, both from planning board feedback and public feedback about the current status of housing in Newbury. The first two key pieces is that, as we were looking at the town, right now in Newbury, housing developers essentially have two choices. Their first choice is to build a single-family detached home. When they build that, it typically is priced at 1 to 2 million dollars because that's what new construction homes in Newbury are going for these days. Their second and really only other option is to use the state's, what's called 40B law, which allows them to override local zoning, override local control, and build multifamily housing that the town has no say in how it looks or what scale it is built at. Because those are really the only two options for housing developers when talking with the planning board and other members of the public, what was, the conclusion came to, we should have a third option for developers and use MBTA communities as a way to get at that third option. So this third option that we're trying to give is an option to create smaller units that may be needed, as we mentioned earlier, if folks looking to downsize, making sure there's land available for smaller-scale units for either seniors looking to downsize or young professionals looking to move into town. The second thing is, if we're requiring multifamily, or I should say allowing multifamily by right in these districts, we know it could probably give us some more control over the way that multifamily looks. And so as part of this bylaw proposal, we are requiring regulations and design guidelines that result in multifamily housing that may fit Newbury's character. That's opposed to that 40B development that we would have very limited control over. And the last thing goes along with that theme, feeling that if this proposal was crafted by right for multifamily housing, it would keep the town in control of what kind of multifamily housing developers actually build. So some of the additional bylaw components that you may note in your town meeting packet in your warrant. Number one, there is an affordability requirement. So if multifamily housing is being built and that multifamily housing has more than 10 housing units in it, 10% of those units must be set aside as income-restricted or affordable. This, any development proposal will have to go through site plan review. That's when the developer goes to the planning board and explains how they're checking all the boxes that are outlined in the bylaw itself. As part of that box-checking process, there are general design standards. Those are listed in the bylaw. You can see that on page 11 in your booklet. Those general design standards are works to ensure that we do not have the type of development that we know folks do not want to see here. You can see there's kind of a cheeky picture over there on the right. Many of you may be familiar with Boston Way at Newbury Port, recent developments that went up. We have the Ghostbusters X through it there because we know that's what folks don't want to see. We heard over and over again that folks do not want to see this kind of large-scale, boxy development. So those design standards were intentionally crafted to avoid that type of development happening in Newbury. Those design standards include a couple things, including things like pitched roofs, varying roof lines, varying facades of the building, materials to be used in the building, open space landscaping, environmental sensitivity, et cetera. So just two more slides here. The first one, what happens if the town does not comply by its deadline? There's a few key penalties. Number one being the town will lose access to several grant programs and will be less competitive in applying for 12 state grant programs. In the past 10 years, the town has received over $1 million in state grants. There are a variety of grants that are specifically called out in this, in the regulations for MBTA communities that the town would be less competitive for. However, the state has also articulated that they may consider other funding decisions for grants for grants that are outside of those articulated lists of proposals of grant options. The next thing, noncompliant communities may lose some of the funding they've already received. We've seen in the town of Milton, they became noncompliant at the start of this year, and they were immediately revoked of a $140,000 grant for a seawall project. Finally, we have seen the Mass Attorney General take legal action against noncompliant communities, so Newberry would have to consider the fact that there will be legal expenses if the town is not compliant. Last slide here, we talked about all the sad and bad of what happens if you don't comply, but what are we trying to think about if the town does end up complying? This came out of a lot of discussions, again, with the board and as we were meeting with the public. Number one, we want to signal to developers that there are certain areas that are appropriate and are not appropriate for multifamily development in Newberry. So by outlining these four areas, the goal is saying if you want multifamily housing on a certain scale, these are the areas that work, do not put it in the other places in town. Number two, it allows us to set design standards, like I mentioned earlier, to make sure the type of development that's built is the kind that residents may want to see, and allows more control over development. And then really the last point that I'll mention here is, again, allowing for more diverse housing options. When looking at the town's housing stock right now, we see a lot of larger, single-family homes, and we want to find a way to make sure there are some smaller units for residents that may need a different-sized home than either than what is available now or what they are living in right now. I'm going to end my portion of the presentation there. Mr. Moderator, I will offer, if folks have questions or queries during the discussion, I am here to answer any questions on that. Thank you.
I would just like to say that having tried to read through all of this myself and finding it somewhat confusing, I think you did an excellent job of breaking it down and making it more clear. Thank you. Could I ask you what price point you are thinking if you know that the housing would be, the senior housing and for the young professionals? What is the price point, the target, for the cost of these homes?
I couldn't speak to the market rate costs of homes. That would be the market right now. Affordable units, to give you an idea, those are set at 80 percent of the area median income, so if you're making 80 percent of the average income or median income in this area, for a one-person household, that's about $80,000 a year for your income. And those units are around $2,000 for a one-bed, or maybe $2,100, I don't remember off the top of my head, for those units, if you're a one-person household, and they vary. But market rate is based off the market. This is not entirely affordable housing. It is both market rate and affordable if they fall under that affordability requirement.
Thank you. Yes, please, go back to the mic.
Is it all four zones, not 154 units, it's 154 units, based on the density?
The question is about the unit capacity of those zones. Am I understanding correctly?
Six hundred and thirty-eight units?
Yes, so all four zones total together. So as part of the process for us to seek compliance with the state, we have to fill out what is called a compliance model. It is essentially a big spreadsheet where we plug in all of the zoning parameters and the parcels that are under consideration, and it tells us theoretically the amount of units that could be put on that site. That model is based off of what the state considers perfect site conditions, and so as part of that, it doesn't include things like sewer capacity or other infrastructure capacity onsite where we know that will limit Newberry's development. In the case of Newberry's proposal here today, the actual unit capacity of all four that are being modeled, again, under those perfect infrastructure conditions, is north of the 500-unit number when Newberry's requirement is lower. Was that the question? Did I answer that? I apologize if I did not, but I-
So what is Newberry's requirement for the units? 154, and this using four zones gives us 500 units? And are they rental versus purchase?
Yep, so it is several hundred units. I can get you the exact number shortly. In terms of rental versus purchasing, we are not restricting and may be limited in our ability to actually restrict. We can't say that they must be ownership or must be rental. We have to allow either.
I'd like to just pause for a moment because we don't have a motion on the table yet. So if we could have it read again, read the request for the motion, which was... Wesley?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that the town approve Article 14 to amend the zoning map, the zoning bylaw as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion or debate? Continued discussion or debate here now?
Mr. Moderator, up here.
Yes.
David Powell, 5 Kentway. I was on the planning board in Newberry for 10 years, and I also served on the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission for that period of time. And I would like to speak in favor of this zoning amendment, and I can imagine that many of you at this point are having, how shall we say, number issues. You're having mapping issues. And also, having had a very excellent presentation from the MVPC staff member, I can also imagine that it's a little difficult when you don't have a home voice, so to speak. I'll be that home voice to start tonight, okay? I've lived in this community for over 30 years. I left it. Some of my colleagues on the select board said I deserted and went to Newbury Port for a few years. And one of the reasons I went was because there was no housing of the size and kind that I wanted to live in, based on where I was currently living in terms of taking care of too much land, et cetera, et cetera. And I couldn't stay here, in my estimation, partly because many years ago, those of you who still were here then, remember that we voted down the village at Little River, okay? For similar kinds of reasons, perhaps, that many of you feel that this is a threat to us. It really isn't. This is essentially designating areas in the town that will not necessarily get developed at all, because frankly, we're not a very attractive proposition. We really aren't to come and build anything. However, we are vulnerable in some ways that you perhaps don't understand. This town currently is dealing with the first 40B development we've had in many, many years, and the reason for that is we do not have sufficient housing of moderate income to meet the state requirement, and therefore, someone can come in and do a 40B, and we have one. And in my experience and estimation, that development is in the worst place they could have chosen to do a 40B, up the end of Pearson Drive, okay? It controversies all of the ideas of good planning. So why is this being proposed? It's being proposed essentially because, to some degree, the state is holding a gun to our head. And why is the state doing that? Is because for the last 40-plus or more years, many communities in this state, if not all, have simply refused to look at the housing crisis we face. If we look at our own community, I'll leave you with two facts. One is that indeed, by 2040, 40 percent of the residents of this town will be over the age of 65. I won't be here then, but some of you will be, and you may be looking for a smaller place to live, and I know all about that. The second thing, which I think I would like you to think about, is that, and this is not a statistic I share with any kind of pleasure, but 25 percent, one in four households in this town are what's called housing-challenged or economically-dwelling-challenged, meaning they are essentially spending more of their annual income on housing than they should be. And the reason for that, I think you all know when you look at the bills, when you look at a number of things. And so what this is doing is asking us to think ahead and think about the time when we undoubtedly will have to make this move, and where will we do it? And I also would suggest, too, that this is not... Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I see your finger.
Thank you. We have some other people that would like to speak, so I think you made your point very well, very eloquently, and I appreciate it.
Could I finish for a moment? Two words, okay?
If you can finish, if it's very quick.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Perfect. That was perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gerard Witten. I live at 15 Northern Boulevard. I have the pleasure of working with these fine folks, Ian and Kayla and the team. Although tonight, I'm speaking with you as a long-term resident of the town of Newberry. I've lived here for more than 25 years. Yet back when I was 28, I found a winter rental down in Plum Island for $500 a month. It's perfect for me. I was near the ocean, I was a half an hour from work, but most importantly, it was something that I could afford. Well, folks, you and I both know that opportunity doesn't exist here in the town of Newberry today, and you'd be lucky to get the rental unit behind me for $500 a night. We need more different types of housing to attract young people and families to this community and to give options to those of us who may be looking to downsize into smaller units, the ability to do so and stay in this town that we know and love. So tonight, you have before you a zoning bylaw and proposed districts that will do just that. They'll give us a great opportunity to start moving, albeit slowly, in the direction of creating additional housing opportunities. So as a longtime resident, I'm excited to vote yes on this warrant article, and I would strongly encourage you to do the same. Thank you for your consideration.
As someone who is not in the 20 to 34 range, but in that over 65, I'd like to talk a little bit about where I live, which is Caldwell Farm, the old folks' home between Governor's Academy and Triton. And I just want to say that we provide, and I think that seniors, this is an advantage with senior housing, we provide a half a million, I'm sorry, $500 million, $500,000 every year, I'm sorry, in taxes, with essentially no services, no kids in the schools. Now, certainly, we want young people, we want people with children, but it can be balanced by the senior housing. I just would add that. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, at the mic.
Hi, Avery Woodworth, 19, Downfall Road, Byfield. I don't necessarily have a problem with the overlay districts and the idea of it all. The question I have is the Central Street district. We've already fought a gas station proposal right at that intersection, and it's a bad intersection, it's a bad location for more traffic coming onto Central Street at any time of day, and if you put, the density is unclear, but how many houses are you talking on that parcel? I'm wondering, why doesn't that include the whole Pearson Plaza, all that land right off of Kent, I mean, right off of, what is Pearson Plaza on? Anyway, that whole parking lot area, why isn't that included in the overlay to reduce a number of things directly onto Central Street? There's already a road for Pearson Plaza. Can you address that, please?
Mr. Moderator, would you allow me to address that question?
Someone here?
Ian, again, for the planning commission, would you allow me to address that question?
Oh, okay. Somebody's going to answer for me?
Yes, sorry, I'm not close enough to the microphone.
Okay, sure, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Thank you. And so Pearson Plaza was briefly looked at, if I remember correctly, and so the strategy here was making sure that we didn't have too much land involved. If we had included that as well, we would have had a lot of even more land than what we had right now, and we had heard the feedback to not have more than what was proposed currently, so that's why it was not in the final version of the proposal.
So my question is, did you guys know about that whole fight with the gas station? The planning board certainly knew about it. Why would you open up the door for another large number of traffic vehicles coming back onto Central Street in a bad location?
That is a great question. Would you allow me to answer, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
And so one of the considerations that was put into place here is on that parcel on Central Street specifically, that concern was brought up about what kind of development might happen there. The concern goes back to that 40B option that developers have right now, and so, thinking from the planning board's perspective and members of the public, and as we were discussing, if that developer's option was only single-family homes or 40B, if there was a developer that wanted to develop that parcel, we wanted them to have a middle-of-the-road option and not develop a 40B, which could result in even more traffic than what this proposal may. And so the thought process was trying to steer them away from that direction in doing a type of development that we would not have control over.
Yeah, that threat's always out there, that's for sure. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. My name is Brett Elger, and our family lives at 71 Pearson Drive in Byfield. We moved there in September of '21 and intend to live in this town for a very long time. My comments are less than two minutes, and they will provide a resident's perspective on a little bit of what Ian presented and what some of the other commenters have mentioned. Having grown up my entire life in northern Michigan, I have never sat in a room at night with everyone in my town to vote on this stuff. This process is far from perfect. It doesn't allow a lot of younger families to participate. One of every two parents are not here, but that's for another day. I caution anyone that's fallen in love with 40B. In the case of our neighborhood, a development was unanimously turned down by the Conservation Committee. The developer appealed to the state, and the outgoing Baker Administration overturned that vote. After a year of litigation between the town and the state, 24 large homes are being jammed into a relatively small area, surrounded by important wetland habitat, at the dead end of a cul-de-sac, thanks to 40B. It has dented and exhausted our neighborhood, but we will still keep throwing the best Halloween party in town. It is important to have housing for all circumstances. Development is necessary, but not just large homes. What about young professionals? A Triton graduate wanting to move back to the town? The service industry? Housing within-law units? There are Newberry residents right now sitting in this room that have no place to move and cash, and no ability to cash in on their equity. All of these folks do not want and/or can't afford large homes. This legislation strikes with precision on the lack of housing. It should be seen as an opportunity and not a requirement. The town has hired Ian and his team to gather a wealth of information to expand our options for placement and housing development to meet a variety of needs. I can't find a downside to keeping all of those options on the table, nor do I understand the immediate redlining of the map, greatly limiting our options several years before the first shovel goes into the ground. This empowers local decision-making and doesn't dance around wetland protection. We should avoid a showdown with the state that wastes time and precious town resources. Lastly, as a town, all of us, it is in our best interest to lead and leave adjacent towns in the dust on a road to housing choices and smart growth in partnership with the ZBA, the planning board, and other bodies involved in housing for Newberry residents. I will happily and proudly vote yes on Article 14.
Thank you. One more, last one, one more.
John Protapapa, 64, Cottage Road. I've just got a couple of questions. Who owns these parcels now?
I don't have the answer to that question. I know a couple of them were sold recently. I don't have the details on the current owners.
So it's not the town?
No, you are not allowed to zone it over town-owned land that is not allowed by the statute.
So what happens if we pass this, but then by the time they decide to build, something else has already happened on that property or it becomes unavailable?
That does not matter, because the state only cares if the zoning is in place. What structures are there does not affect the town's compliance. Only the zoning matters.
But what if it's not available to build as it's supposed to be?
That's okay. If it has a possibility of any time in the future to be bought and redeveloped under the zoning, that is what matters. It does not matter if it's available today, or in 10 years, or in 50 years. If in 1,000 years it could be bought, that's what matters.
And so we're voting on all four parcels, so all four parcels would be subject to these developments?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can vote. I think we've heard great explanations from both sides and interest from both sides. Can you put it up, please? 234, yes, 80, no. Thank you, thank you. Article 15, Wesley, you want to just briefly speak to this?
Yes, I'm sure everybody's going to be happy about this one. I move no action.
Wesley is saying no action on this article. We can move on.
What do you mean no action on 15?
15 for the wireless district?
Yes.
It hasn't been, all the kinks haven't been worked out of it, so we can't present it at this meeting at this time.
No, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Article 16. Dana?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant. Two-thirds vote is required.
Have a second, please? Do I hear any discussion or debate?
So Martha Taylor, planning director, I just want to give a very brief introduction to these articles.
Oh, yes, okay, yes.
So what I'm going to say is in reference to Articles 16, 17, and 18, all of which pertain to a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation which is proposed to be constructed on Newberry's closed and capped landfill at 75 Boston Road. The project will be constructed on the south-facing slopes, and yeah, I think there may be a plan to help people orient. It'll be on the south-facing slopes of the two closed waste disposal cells. Total capacity of the installation will be approximately 573.33 kilowatt DC and will consist of approximately 1,456 photovoltaic panels. The installation is expected to generate approximately 725,560 kilowatt-hours of electricity per year. The array will be supported on concrete ballast blocks with a low-bearing pressure designed to avoid damaging or compromising the integrity of the engineered landfill cap. Related work will include installation of all required equipment, transformers, cable and conduit, equipment pads, et cetera, installation of new utility poles, reconstruction of the access road through the property between Boston Road and the transfer station, relocation of the firing range, which is there now, and installation of a perimeter fence. DEP has issued the required post-closure use- DEP has issued the required post-closure use permits for the proposed work, and the project has received local approval from both the Planning Board through the special permit process and a public hearing, and the Conservation Commission, which issued an order of conditions for the work also through a public hearing process. So Article 16 is asking the town to vote to change the use of the surface of the landfill to be used for general municipal purposes and authorize the Select Board to enter into a lease for the property for a term of up to 30 years. Article 17 is-
Let's hold, let's hold on 17 and 18. Let's vote on 16 first, I think.
Yep.
See if there's any questions. We have, do we have a second on 16? Thank you. Any discussion or debate? Well, we have someone here, Martha, who can answer the questions. Any questions? This takes a two-thirds vote. No questions? Oh, I'm sorry, where? Oh, oh, okay, I see.
Tim McCaffrey, Fort Low Street. After 30 years, who owns all that stuff and what happens to it?
There will be a decommissioning process after 30 years, or it could be, I think, conveyed to the town.
And is that part of the lease, that they would decommission it and remove all the material?
Yes.
Seemed hesitant on that.
So, do you want me to answer the question?
Go ahead.
So, the lease, the lease and the lease requires a decommissioning and also an option for the town to purchase, and it's related to the future use of it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a vote in a second, and I don't see any more discussion. Let's vote on this, please. Article 17 only. And this requires a two-thirds.
Article 16.
16.
16, I'm sorry. This requires a two-thirds majority. Two-thirds. Okay, so let's vote. 187,4, 26 against, thank you very much. Article 17. Jeff?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Martha, you want to speak to that now? I'm sorry, second, thank you.
I was just gonna summarize what the article is asking, which is asking the town to vote to authorize the Select Board to negotiate and enter into an alternative on-bill credit agreement with the developer.
Okay. Do we have any discussion or debate on this article? Seeing none? Let's vote, please. 195,4, 24 against, thank you. Article 18. Alicia, please.
I move that the town approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Any discussion or debate?
And just, Article 18 is asking the town to authorize the Select Board and the Board of Assessors to negotiate and to enter into and execute a tax agreement with the developer for a period of up to 20, 20 years.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Simple majority here. 194 to 25, thank you. Article 20, Article-
19.
Article-
19.
19, yes. Article 19, and that is going to be?
Bill.
Bill?
I have it, Dick.
You have it?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to amend Section 5 of Chapter 460 of the Acts of 2008, as noted in the Finance Committee Appropriations booklet.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or debate on this article?
I do.
Yes.
My name is Jack Reibicki. I live at 37 Larkin Road in Byfield. I do not believe that the state of Massachusetts Legislature and all its oversight commitment erred in passing the Town Administrator Act with the strict provision that members of the Newbury Select Board, the Newbury School Committee, and the Newbury Finance Committee all be mandated to only serve on those committees, no other capacities. The macro reason for being for these disciplines, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and the School Committee, is because the volunteers acting on behalf of citizens in pursuit of issues and concerns of our people represent government, education, and financial affairs. These are our most important taxpayer concerns, and these should never be watered down by having our volunteers overlay by sitting on more than the committee they are appointed or elected to represent. Further, this lessens citizens' input and does not behoove us at all. In particular, fiscal needs need to be independent of each other, with the only overlay of our town administrator between, in this case, FinCom and capital planning, which they're proposing to overlay. I submit to you that moving, the mixing of our future money concerns of capital planning directly with the year-over-year concerns of the budget concerns of FinCom isn't in our best interest, and all physical, all of our fiscal disciplines should remain state law-required in your appropriate lane. Capital planning with the future, FinCom with the current, Town Administrator is the proper in-between. To have people sitting on both committees waters it down and lends itself to the fact, for instance, we're standing here tonight at Triton, not any S, because according to the Chair of the FinCom, we have an air handler, noise issuing, some heat and ventilating conditions. According to the engineering report that was provided to me by a public records request, there's over $8 million worth of needed equipment and over not-yet-addressed concerns for the people. So I address that, if capital planning says there's no concerns and FinCom believes it, there's a disconnect. I think that needs to be set aside. If we need to add people to the capital planning, I suggest we put two more citizens on there outside of FinCom for more effort. Putting two more FinCom people on this capital planning only regurgitates the same information. We need more citizen input, not more of the same. Thank you. The vote is no on 19, please. Let's keep everybody in their own lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Someone has a response here?
I have, I have one thing. I just want to clarify. We are not here, someone just misrepresented what I said. We are here tonight, I commented that it was nice to not have that. We are not here due to the, the air fans. The decision on where to hold this is set, select, with the Select Board. Do not put words in my mouth for things I did not say about why we are here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marshall Jesperson, 169 Elm Street in Byfield. I am a member of the Capital Planning Committee. The Capital Planning Committee works really closely with FinCom, and to have that ability to work back and forth in the process of protecting and planning for the town is an important and real function. And to say that the citizens of the town of Newbury are ruled out of that is an absolute misrepresentation, because we have the open meeting laws. And so I would urge you to vote yes on this particular one, and we'll continue on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, over here.
I think-
Mr. Moderator, over here.
Ready to vote, I don't-
Over here.
Or is this Jim?
Over here, back there, and over here.
Where? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Patrick Cuffernan, 11 Adams Lane. I am a citizen of this town. I have been a citizen since 2007, and I've come to a lot of these meetings. I'm on the, I'm on the, I almost said planning, I was on the Planning Board for a time as an alternate. I'm on the Finance Committee now. Being on this committee does not make me any more or less of a citizen of this town. And the idea that I cannot represent my own judgment and the judgment that I gather from talking to citizens of this town simply because I'm on this committee is completely wrong. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Yes?
Mr. Moderator. My name's Nick Oram. I live at 27 Green Street in Newbury, and I've been on the Capital Planning Committee for nearly a decade. And, to me, it's a, a simple issue. If you're gonna buy a new car, maybe you'd like to know how much money you have in the bank, and, so, input from the Finance Committee is important to us, and I think I would like to vote yes on-
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I? Right here? I just want to just make town meeting members aware that the role of the Finance Committee is to be the eyes and ears of town meeting, and as you came through the warrant tonight, you saw there were operating articles on here as well as capital. So I think that the, having two members of the Finance Committee serve on the Capital Planning Committee, as our capital planning bylaw states, serves the town of Newbury well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. I think we're ready to vote. Can you put that up? Thank you. We're ready to vote, please. 149, yes, and 70, no. Thank you. Article 21.
Article 20.
20, I'm sorry, Article 20. Article 20.
Leslie.
Who's reading that?
Leslie.
Leslie?
Thank you. I move that the town vote to dissolve the Newbury Improvement Trust, and that any remaining assets of the trust shall be held by the Select Board to be used for such purposes as they were received by the trust, if any, and if not, for the purposes so set forth in the trust such that any remaining net assets of the trust may be distributed by the Select Board, including, but not limited to, the kind of distribution without need for further appropriation, and that the powers of the trustees shall continue for purposes of affecting and dis- dissolution?
Disillusion.
Thank you. Dissolution contemplated hereunder until such times as the affairs of the trust are concluded.
Second.
Yes?
Hello, I'm Ben Armstrong, 30 High Road. I'm privileged to be on the Newbury Improvement Trust, serving with Lynn Kettleson and Mary Leary, and we believe this is the right move. The trust was founded in order to solve a problem, to allow the town to accept money for capital improvements or the betterment of the town. The Selectmen, at the time that it was created, could not accept money for that. Now they can, so the trust is superfluous. And so we'd like to pass the money along to the Selectmen, or, and most of the money has been donated for the senior center that we have collected, and so we'd like to pass that along to the Selectmen to be distributed to that.
Is it fair to say that you represent the feelings of the other people on the board?
Yes, it was a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Very helpful. Okay. I think we can vote. Okay, vote, please. 192, yes, 16, no. Thank you. Article 21. Dana Packard.
Motion. I move that the town revoke General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, F3 and 4, which established more than three years ago, a special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund. As of July 1, 2025, at which time, the balance of the special revenue fund and any future cable franchise fees and cable-related revenue will be deposited into the general fund.
Second.
Any discussion or debate? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Jerry Heavy, 33 Main Street. Some of you may remember me.
Closer to the microphone, please. I want everybody to hear you.
I am.
There you go.
It's about down to my tonsils in a few seconds, but I used to be on the Board of Selectmen, and I would ask you this evening to please vote no on Article 21. Article 21 will allow the town to change the present state law which says that these PEG monies can only be used to support PEG access services. The town wants to sweep this money into the general fund to be used to take any other action. That's the rest of the last few words in this article. So, I would say that the 900 and, excuse me, $993,000 that is the present balance in this account, imagine, it's close to a million dollars, and where does this money come from? It comes from each and every Comcast subscriber. If you have cable TV or the internet, 5% every single month of your bill, 5% of your bill goes into this fund. It goes into this special kitty. And the money should be used as it was intended. It should be used to support the PEG access. And what is PEG? PEG means Public Access, Education, and Government. This money should not be hoarded and swept into the general fund. This history of hoarding this money shows, if you go on to Channel 6, that's our local access programming, what do you see? You see a big black screen and the words, "This channel is not available in your service area." So tell me, why are you paying 5% of your bill if you don't have this service? We basically have no local access station, unlike most of the other cities and towns in Massachusetts. This money should be spent the way it was intended by the state, and it should not be converted, this $993,000, into a general fund for the, for the town to use whatever. Now, we just voted earlier, $85,000, that is, and that's basically, I would think, salaries for the two or three people who work on IT. And I would suggest, that's not even 10% of this money. So they've been nickel-and-diming all of the Comcast subscribers for years, and I ask that you vote no, because this isn't right. No more hoarding of this money, using it as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Doyle, 6-
Yes, yes, Mike.
6-Book and 1/2 Newbury. Follow-up on what Jerry said. For years, back in 2001, 2, 3, and 4, we had live TV of the Selectmen meetings. We, the most important meeting this year, the Finance Committee and the Selectmen meeting, was blacked out. If we cannot, we're not spending the money properly. The guts, they say, of the system is down in the police station. It should be in the town hall. We're gonna be there for another five or 10 years anyway, so why don't we use the money properly, the way it was, came out of my pocket, and if people didn't have cable, okay, it didn't come out of their pocket. I would like to have cable in my house to show the Selectmen meetings without having the volume go out, without having the picture go out, or having no picture at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, on the floor.
Oh, yes.
Pam Wall at 16 Withington Street. I have a question, because it seems like a lot of money, I'm not that familiar with the issue, but would it be possible for part of that money to be used for communications, technology, programming in the high school?
But it's not being used?
Lisa, can I answer that question?
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Where is that?
Me, right here. Dick, Dick, it's me.
I'm sorry, you can't speak.
So, to answer the question about using the fund, this set of funds in the high school, the answer is no. We had this discussion a couple of years ago, over a period of two or three years, and both the Department of Revenue as well as Special Counsel to the town related to cable access and myself, is that you, Triton is not part of the community and they can't have access to these funds. However, there are two methods by which the cable access funds are retained by the town, three actually. The town decided to set up a special revenue fund a number of years ago, more than three years ago, which was one of the options. The other option was an enterprise fund, which they didn't choose, and then the other option is to have the money go into the general fund and then have it appropriated every year at town meeting. And so, once the, the special revenue fund is created, if after three years the town wants to revoke it, which is what's being proposed tonight, the town may revoke it, that money can go into the general fund, and then later, next year, after the fiscal year changes, next year, it could come back to town meeting and be appropriated for cable access purposes in a line item in the budget.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
If I may, I, two, two of the Select Board members voted not to recommend to move this forward. I was one of those Select Board members. What I would like to see is, I would like to try and reinvigorate the 501(c)(3) program that was originally tried to be established for, and then, that, through that program, we would gain control over the use of this money for, I believe, its intended purpose. And so what I would like to move tonight is that this article get passed over, and we readdress this next year, and it would give us another 12 months to possibly make, to make that happen.
So you're making a motion that we postpone it for a year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second? Before we can move forward, we have to move on that issue or that motion, excuse me. Any other discussion or debate on the motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to provide a little, a little background history knowledge on this.
Yes.
The town of Newbury, prior to 2015, had this municipal model, which is where the, the line item in the budget was appropriated annually in our budget for PEG access programming. In 2015, the town meeting voted to create this special revenue fund, which held these monies aside for the sole purpose of PEG access programming, and the hope, as Mr. Packer is speaking to, was that a 501(c)(3) model similar to the Salisbury Community TV model would grow in Newbury. It never has. The, the intent of the, of this Article 21 tonight is to revoke the, the building of these funds in a separate account where it's not being used for any purposes, bringing it back into the general fund, creating a line item in the general fund, and the, the PEG access programming would go back to the way it was prior to 2015. Now, there is a significant balance in that account. That account can be earmarked for PEG programming as needed once it's in the general budget. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I respond to that? My question is, if this money isn't used for any particular reason and it's just sitting around, why, when the contract with Comcast was renegotiated three years ago, why was it increased from 3% of our bill to 5% if it was just money that wasn't going to be used? It's money that's being hoarded and being said for other purposes, which isn't right.
So, Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry, but the town meeting member is incorrect. The ballot, the 2019 contract with Comcast was 4%, and it went up to 5%. So, that's, thank you.
Okay. I think we, you have some additional information?
Just no information, question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Avery Woodworth, 19 Downfall Road, Byfield. If this money gets moved into the general fund, is there a guarantee that it will only be spent for educational and programming benefits? Can you give me that guarantee? Otherwise, I don't see moving it to that fund.
It has to be appropriated. I can answer-
Yeah, but if it just goes into the general fund, who's to say they don't use it and slip it over to-
Russell has an answer for that.
As I said earlier, it has to be, it has to come back out and be re-appropriated by town meeting next year.
And so there'll be a running tally and we'll, we'll be able to keep track of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Question on the motion.
I think we have enough information to vote.
On the, on the motion, on the motion, Dick. Is it a question on the motion?
We're voting on-
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion, I'm sorry. We're voting on the motion to postpone. Okay, let's vote for that. 98 to 95. First close vote. 98% saying no, do not postpone, 95% saying yes.
95%, not percent, just people.
People, I'm sorry.
Right, so now it goes to the main motion.
Yeah. Now we go back to the main motion, which is about deleting the account and moving the money into the, into the general fund. Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're going to vote with the clickers. Can you put that one up, please? It's all set. 106, 106, no, and 93, yes. So the account stays.
Article 22.
Thank you, everyone, for staying. I know, I know, I understand. Staying till the end. You have Article 23 now?
22.
22 now, which will be read by Jeff.
Mr. Moderator, I like this one. I move no action.
Second.
That's it.
Second, and I move to adjourn? Second.
All in favor of adjourned? Okay, thank you very much.